We have December 10th, Rollinsburg Select Works Re-Order. First order of business is approval of minutes of December 3rd. Do you have a chance to look at them?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Any corrections, edits, concerns?
None.
So done, we will pass them by consensus. First, second order of business is community input. C and E. All right, we're going to get into reserve funds. Project Frank, you want to come on up here, Caroline? I'll take care of this.
Okay. So, there are a number of reserve funds that the board has options to allocate funds towards or not. Yes, that's a good resource for what we did last year for each of those accounts. One that may be more a topic of conversation than usual would be the Culvert Fund, since there is a culvert that needs attention and there is a potential plan to remediate it. So, yes, that sheet has, everybody's looking at this sheet, which has the balances on the right-hand side of each of those funds. So, the Culvert Fund has approximately $20,000 in it. These are the trustees' balances.
This reflects the money taken out to work on...
The tiers.
Yeah.
No.
Huh?
So...
Going on.
So, as far as the Capital Reserve Fund, the Capital Improvement Fund goes, it does not include the deposit that was approved at town meeting this year, nor the three purchases that were approved this year. So, that I can give you through, the balance is approximately $235,000 before anything that you're proposing for 2019. But that activity hasn't taken place in the actual bank accounts yet, if that makes sense.
The Culvert Reserve Fund?
No, no, I'm talking about the Capital Improvement Fund. Culvert Reserve Fund...
Didn't we take some out of there for some of the Culvert work, I thought?
I don't believe so.
They all came out of...
It all came out of operating this year.
Operating, okay. All right, so we truly do our $20,500 and 63 cents? All right. So, George had mentioned that it was going to be approximately between 25 and 50,000 to complete, depending on the scope of the project, the larger culvert on Sligo Road that's been reduced down to one lane, or had been reduced down to one lane, to reopen it to two lanes of vehicular traffic. Didn't know, didn't believe it had to be done this year. We wanted to start planning for it for this year. So, I would suggest it might be a good idea we put in 10 last year, maybe a good idea to put another 10 in, to start saving, in case it is more than 25. We also know that there's another culvert at the other end of Sligo that he wants to do some work on, so we need some money for that as well. So, what do you think? What do you, how do you think?
Yeah, but this is something that's going to stay open, like indefinitely, right? Because it all, it would, but it only is, it only can be used for culverts.
But any culvert.
Any culvert.
Culvert in town.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
And they're used for the sizable ones, like, you know?
Mm-hmm.
That would come out of fund balance, the 10,000?
No.
No.
Well, that's up to how you all want to word the warrant article, but typically it's funded through taxation.
Oh, okay. So, I would suggest keeping the 10,000 again for 2019.
I agree with that, yeah.
10,000 to that. All right, what else we have? We have the CIP, which we already know was going to be 174.9, wasn't it?
I think it's 176.4. But I have, I think it's 174.9. It's okay. 179.4.
You're always right. 174.9.
No, 179.4.
Not 1.
And once he's not.
The numbers were, well, the numbers were there. Put them in the right order, all right. 179.4, all right. Slightly dislikes it tonight. Next, we have the Conservation Land Trust Capital Reserve Fund. We have traditionally been putting 10,000 in to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate the sum of 10,000 to be added to the Conservation Land Trust Capital Reserve Fund. $10,000 will be transferred from the land and used change tax fund to fund this appropriation.
So, just a note about that, if there are no land use change tax, qualifying transactions, then you have no income in land use change tax category to transfer over.
Right, so it doesn't happen.
So, what, I know what the money's used for, it's like, but how often do they use it? I mean, there's 135,000 in there, so, I mean, it's, do they have, they don't have a project or anything that they're...
There hasn't been, well, there's no, I don't think there's a "they." You could consult with the Conservation Commission, but it would be...
This is, oh, this is not their money, this is the town's money.
This is town money, if the town wants to buy land.
Wants to buy conservation.
Oh, it's to buy...
If a property comes up for sale and it's really important to the town to conserve it and not allow it to be developed, you can buy it.
As it is as well.
So, so there's no regular reoccurring transaction, but it also could be wiped out in the first place.
When, when it was proposed, we had a special town meeting to purchase the land that's now Scotts Landing.
Mm-hmm.
Part of the funding was going to come from, from this. And when we were going to purchase some other land in town, it's going to come from this.
Yeah, because the land on Silver Street, yeah. No, the one off of Foundry, too, where next to the, it's all wetlands, but we bought that, we have land in the reserve.
Yes.
But that was one, too, I believe.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
It was back towards, about on the other side of South, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, back, back behind the, the waste park area, yeah, yes. So, I mean, there are practical applications, and again, only it's funded if, if there's money available from land use change tax, so...
So, we're okay if nothing goes in it, we don't have anything from that other fund?
It doesn't coin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there an objection to doing the 10,000 for that, then?
No.
I mean, it's just a savings account if the opportunity arises.
These are restricted accounts.
Yes. Everything is restricted in one way or another, in these articles, for these accounts, yes.
And this is all what the trustees have, I believe, so.
So, one of the things I'll bring to your attention, which I've drafted, I've included in the draft warrant for your consideration, is the five accounts there that have very small balances, to wipe out those accounts and transfer the small balances into the general fund.
Yes.
If they're to no longer be used, otherwise we can do it with some and not others, but just somehow...
Or transfer it into...
Something else, like the Sligo Road, you could move to Culvert, if you want.
I was going to say, I was going to say CIP, yeah, whatever.
Something like that.
So, we used to do the town evaluation?
Actually, I didn't mean that one.
Not that one.
Good catch, and thank you, but no, we need to fund, consider funding that at whatever rate would be appropriate, given the new Avatar contract.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
So, that amount's going to change.
So, it's only four of them that are questionable?
The Police Cruiser, which now would be funded through CIP.
Transfer station.
Transfer Station would be funded by CIP and...
What's the difference between property and town reevaluation?
Yeah, which is property revale and a town revale, and they probably ought to get combined into one.
Line to make those one, okay.
Right.
Okay. What is the Fred Green trust? Is that for upstairs?
I have no idea what that is.
It's, we had a description of it somewhere. Do you see it at historical committee meeting one time, maybe?
Maybe, I'm not sure.
I think, it was what I'm thinking of. South Street, what was her name? Mrs., I can't think of the lady's name.
Fred Green?
Uh, no, no, no.
Mrs. Green.
No, Mrs. Green, no. Greenaway, wasn't it? Isn't there a name?
Ruth Lawrence.
Lawrence.
Florence Greenway, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Gave...
That's out of town, yeah.
Gave, what she grew up on, South Street. So, gave, it's a common story, a bunch of her stuff ended up with that Charpentier after she passed away, her daughter gave to her. And in there was a whole file on donations from Fred Green and a couple of other people, and it was for historical purposes, why give her this money, if it's what, if the same one is, so. I'm not saying we'd do anything else with it, but there was a whole list of stipulations as to what should be done with the money, so. Right now, I'm not suggesting we do anything with it, but I think that's what it was. So, some of these may have, like, obviously the Police Cruiser, Transfer Station, these are set up by the town, but Fred L. Green Trust would have been a bequeathed by Mr. Green to do certain things, so we wouldn't want to...
You have to honor that.
Right, of course, yeah, so. New equipment? What is, what is new equipment?
That's a great question, that I would defer to the trustees.
We should ask them, because it's got $30,000, isn't it?
Good, I mean, is it previous, before the title of CIP came along?
I, I don't know.
If it is, it might make sense to roll into it, that's what the purpose of the...
Even at that amount of money, we should have, consider having one fund.
We should know what it's for.
One fund, yeah.
Yes.
Anyway, just don't want to lose track of, is that the only other trust fund, the question?
The bottom one?
Yeah, what is that? Article 20 on 2017.
I, I have to say, I'm confused about that, because we have, that's the Transfer Station, which has a considerable amount of money in it, but should probably get rolled back into the general fund or some other fund, because we're done with that project. Unless there's a reason to keep it open and people want to have such a thing for the Transfer Station, but it is a duplication of, of the other one, the fourth one there, and I don't know if that was a previous earlier one, because it's, or the other thing is, it may just be interest, and maybe he's separated it out for a reason, it's not actually a different account. I, I don't know, but I have, I do have questions, too, so.
Do we have the right to ask him to consolidate them as they're in?
The board is the governing agency over the warrant, so you can request whatever you want to request, but really it's up to the board to decide what to put on the warrant. That being said, I've had that conversation with him, and he supports the idea. They support the idea of housekeeping. So, I don't know if they approve of, or need to approve of, or if the board wants to consult with them regarding which accounts getting consolidated into which other accounts. You know, you could do this by, you know, in a number of different ways, so it would all have to go through town meeting. To my mind, it's up to the board to decide, to suggest some things to people on the ballot.
So, Article 20, 2017 was to establish a transportation improvement capital reserve.
Oh, transportation, there you go, thank you.
Transfer Station.
So, that has $14,000 more going into it in your...
And that was associated with the vehicle, the $5 vehicle.
Oh, 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 oh.
There you go.
Know what was that supposed to be used for, when that was...
Road maintenance.
Road maintenance.
Yes, so, good job, thank you, Michael. So, that check is in the packet for tonight.
So, that's not going in? It's to stay away.
No.
The other one's going in.
So, this is last year's plus interest, probably, no, no, 16s.
This is, um, 17.
No, 17s, right.
That's 17 revenue, and we've got 18 to add to it, which is $14,000, $14,000. So, you've got 21 plus in there now.
You put in, and that's, put that, put it in. All right, so the only other...
So...
That's coming from the capital, Conservation Land Trust Capital Reserve Fund, for this purpose, okay, well, we don't need to worry about that.
No, but it would be helpful to revisit this after you evaluate the assessing contracts.
Yes.
Because that has a five-year option, which will inform what you would want to put in that article.
Okay. So, for tonight, the only reserve funds then that we had to worry about were CIP, Culvert, and Conservation Land Trust, right?
Right, and then we'll revisit eval.
Okay, so, I'd like a motion to, except the numbers that we previously discussed, we'll have a formal vote on it, so we can have that ready for...
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to allocate the funds we discussed into the capital improvement Conservation Land Trust and Culvert Fund. So, 179,400, 10,000, and 10,000 respective.
I'll second.
End of discussion? All right, I'll let you say what you think.
Aye.
I oppose, all right. Caroline, you know, you know that, then. Next is the Avatar contracts. So, where, I didn't want to be pulled.
It's the second piece of paper right there, yellow.
So, Avatar has decided to raise their...
Yes, and the final page.
Their rates again?
Yes, is your, are your options.
So, our two options are, as outlined by Avatar, let me just say that, are either having a four-year contract with a grand total of $97,880, or a one-year contract for $5,720. We need to take care of this this evening, so Caroline can get that over to us, and we can figure out exactly what we need to start saving for into the...
Reevaluation.
The reevaluation fund, which we actually didn't take up yet, but it's really difficult to take that up until we know what the contracts come out to be. So, you had a conversation with, with Avatar, correct, about why they're going up?
Not a conversation, but you can see from the letter there introducing the contract that they're explaining the increase to, to recent increase in hours that they've allocated toward Rollinsford.
Did they give an accounting, or did they...
They have not. They, they do give some indication on their monthly invoices, how much time they spend in Rollinsford. What's not, I'm, I'm not sure that they're using all of their allotted time, and I'm not sure that what's on the invoice really equals...
Monthly invoice.
Or, or does it really show an increase over the last several years? Once upon a time, assessing was handled more in-house, that fell by the wayside, some data fell through the cracks, and there's, there was a makeup period, and there, so we did put a lot on them a couple of years ago, but that would have been reflected in whatever previous contracts were approved. The contract, we all are in a one-year contract currently at an increased rate, so to my mind, whatever previous bump in hours over the past several years, as they're, as they're planning, would have been reflected in that increase unless there was another substantial bump in hours. So, I'm just kind of concerned about that and curious about that, but I don't, you know, if the board's fine with the contract, it's not for me to question it, so.
Well, I think...
I just wanted to express that to you all.
I think we should have at least a twice-a-year report from them of how many hours they've put in, so we can make those decisions correctly. And if they, if we knew that they were having more hours, if they send us a report every six months, we would know that they are over their allotted hours.
I asked for that, and they said they put hours on the monthly invoice, but to my mind, what's noted in the invoices doesn't equal a substantial amount of time. And also, I had a conversation with our assessor at one point a couple of months ago, and he seemed to think that we could handle the contract differently, whereby he would have a regular, once-a-month standing appointment...
Right.
At the town office, because we have that kind of time to use.
And never materialized.
Well, A, it never materialized, but B, why was he offering that? Because we have the time, if we don't have the time...
If we don't have the time, right.
Right, that's why I'm concerned.
So, I'm concerned about the increase. We still have to do something, but if they're going to increase us by that much, can they give us a discount or throw in online tax cards? Or, you know, can they, I don't know, is there some kind of further justification? Because to my mind, it's just an increase, and frankly, we're still receiving poor customer service for that.
Why can't we ask them to come in here and have a conversation with the board?
That is a great idea.
Well, I mean, face-to-face is a lot different than sending a letter out, you know?
This is what I would like to see happen. I'd like to see us do one here with them, and after town meeting, when things kind of slow down, but maybe you slow down a little bit, we have a serious conversation about issuing an RFP for assessing services, and we look for, for another, another company. That's what I'd like to see happen, because I'm, I actually, I like Mr. Robert, I think he's a very nice guy. He's always been very nice and agreeable when he shows up in person, but it takes a long time to chase him down. And we've had, we've had our tax collector send numerous emails asking him to fix things like around current use and other issues. When there's issues on tax cards that arise, and it takes him quite a while to take care of that, so I'm not really pleased with the level of service we're getting, so I'd like to overlook someone else. But we've talked about it in the past, we've never done it seriously, so...
Why would we sign a year contract if we want to...
Well, we have to have somebody, so.
Well, the other thing you could do is...
We're just going to take it, you're buying someone.
Maybe you can modify the language of the contract to include some kind of timeframe by which we get responses, or we get some other different articulated level of service, like this regular monthly, something that's not happening now that makes it worth money.
That's what I think that they should, come in here and talk to us, and we'll tell their concerns and let them justify why, why they do the things that they do.
Well, I'm okay with having another conversation with them, but we've had them in here before.
Not by the current board.
Passports have had the person come in, who've talked about what we don't like. We're told one thing, and then every year we're brought back, we get another contract, we assign it, and nothing changes, so I'm kind of at my wit's end with that, to be honest with you. But if we want to try one more time and have a conversation with them, we can.
Well, I'm, I'm not prepared to sign it, to be honest, unless we do something, either have them come in or have them send us a justification of why they're going up, and what they can do to improve their service by their increase.
The one-year contract covers 2019?
Yeah.
January to December?
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't give us all the flexibility we've...
And it only just came in, you know, there, there wasn't a lot of warning about the increase.
What was the price for the four-year contract, not that I'm advocating for that, but...
We both should take a look.
Thank you. So, oh, I see, there's a, there's a balloon payment, that the, if you go one year, it's $5,000, $5,000, $5,000, $8,000?
Well, revale.
The revaluation is...
We get revale every five years, so we're, we're into one year, we did it in 17, so in 18 is year one of toward the next revale. So, year five is when that happens, which is $70,000 or $80,000, yeah.
So, to your point, Denise, having them in here would have to happen next Monday, because that's our last meeting of the year.
We want to think...
Can, can we go into January without a signed contract?
At this point, the appointments I need are happening this month. Who knows what might happen next month, but, you know?
You would think that they would serve us, us being previous customers, without a signed contract, if we're asking for additional information before signing some, and if they're not willing to do it, then we're not, we shouldn't be working with them. I'm sorry, I mean, they've been our cut, you know, our vendor for several years. How many years have they been doing it?
Decades.
It's supposed to be a three-year, right?
Decades.
I mean, so, they can't just throw something at us without justification, and we're asking for additional information, or me. I would think if, if we had a problem and that didn't resolve, that kind of just gives me an answer.
We'd like to have another conversation with them, if you want to try, see if they'll come in on next Monday.
Okay.
Try, we'll hold it off for another week, but I...
I'll use two fingers, Mike, if you can do it if you don't like.
No, no, listen, I'm always willing to give someone another, to listen, I really am, and if you want more information, I don't want to...
I want justification.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, I just, I've kind of at my wit's end with that, that's all. But we can, we can see if Chad and Prue can come in, or whoever can pump a chat, but come in next Monday?
Yes, I will do that. One thing to keep in mind that is outstanding are abatement mediations. I don't know what the status of that is, but you know that we had a number of...
Right.
...abatement applications. When people get denied, they have the right to go to the Bureau of Land Tax Appeals. A half dozen or so people have done that, and that, so the first step is ordered into mediation with the assessing company. They're in that process. If they can't mediate, then BTLA will decide it, so that's still out there.
And clearly, we're going to need assessing services. We don't have an assessing department over in that need, so. Do I think it's going to take a full year to find another company? Probably not, but it's going to take us several months to vetting and lining things up, and we move at a kind of glacial pace as it is on everything else, and I can't imagine this is going to be any quicker, so that's...
I do agree that it's, there's probably not enough time to do something different for next year, except to say, if we're going to pay that money, what can we get for that money? Or can we change language or get a different kind of service for that? But I don't think you could, you know, we're not going to be able to change companies until it's...
Can you counter proposal?
I don't see why not, like, why, why should we just accept that as the one true path? Yes.
If you, if you want to go with them, just say, this is our counter-proposal, and take a certain amount of money out of it until they come and satisfy our needs. Why not? I mean, you shouldn't give them, how much are they, how much is for one year?
I think whatever you do needs to, whatever change you would want to do, I would suggest that we contact them, and this is their contract, and ask them to change the language in their contract so that it satisfies the board's will, rather than, you know, it's not our document, so we can't revise it.
No, but we can tell them what we want.
What we want, and get them to include it, and we'll sign it in another form, yeah.
I'll put that back in.
Okay, so, yes, I'll get them from Monday.
Okay, and then we have, all right, I want to move up town warrant conversation, but we need to get out of here, I guess, but, all right, so...
I haven't printed it, but I can do so quickly, if you want to see what I have drafted for articles.
Yeah, why don't you go do that?
Okay, you can address...
In the meantime, we'll take that. I'm going to hold off on number five, because it's Caroline, yeah.
Okay, I do, okay.
We have department, it's only, we have building inspector code enforcer, junkyard license canceled on Rollins Road.
Mm-hmm.
You are here, I didn't think you were coming in. All right, well, I want to...
Sure. How you all doing?
My conversation about the... I'll quicker, but we're here.
Yes, I just want to give you a quick update. I, I probably saw the email that I sent, I got a response from the staff attorney at Municipal Association.
Yes.
So, I called him today because of some of the stuff that I read in this, and he cautioned us against trying to use this to deny the license outright.
Right.
So, I wrote about the...
Right.
And one of the reasons I came in, because this is a tough email, the way this is read, the way, sorry, the way this is written, it appears to me that the decision, yeah, the governing body should not meet in prime to make that, we all know on that, but instead of just a letter going out, you know, from me or signed by you folks, when the draft has been created, it should be reviewed, changed as necessary, then adopted by the governing body as its decision in a duly known as public hearing.
Right.
So it sounded like we need to have another public hearing before the letter goes out.
Okay.
So I'm going to do the letter.
Okay.
I'll send you a draft, make any changes. We're going to just focus on the towing aspect.
Right.
Saying that it's unlawfully established, non-conforming use, and he needs to stop that while he pursues, if he chooses to, I mean, he certainly can choose not to pursue the approvals from the zoning board and then, and then the planning board. But we're kind of hamstrung in the effect, in the attempt of getting the junkyard itself closed up.
Right, okay. All righty. So the next step is going to be to, is to have another public hearing?
Right.
On whether or not we're going to issue a letter?
Whether, yeah, that would be the decision. The governing body adopts that as its decision in the next public hearing. So I'll send you the letter and then, I'm not sure of the timing of establishing a public hearing, but I understand that holiday is coming up and all that.
Right.
And it has been going on for a while, so.
And did you have this conversation about this new section with Mr. Buckley?
Um, Steve Buckley? Yes, yes, I did, yes, I did, yeah.
And you agree that we have to have a hearing?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
I mean, I'll confirm that, but it was one of the things we talked about. He was very nice about it. He spent quite a bit of time on the phone.
Yeah.
I was bringing up different scenarios and can we do this or that? And this was one of the things I covered and I thought for sure that it was one of the things he confirmed.
So he's asking, saying that we have to have a public hearing because the first public hearing was on the junkyard. This is on the towing business. The second public hearing will be on the towing business, correct?
Um.
Because we want to relocate it. We want it gone from there temporarily or permanently.
Correct.
So the first one was on the junkyard?
The first one was on the towing.
Well, you don't-
Well, it was on, it was on many things, but it was, it was, I think it was public as a junkyard, above the junkyard area.
Was it just solely based on the fact that we had complaints?
Yes.
Is why we had to have a hearing?
Right.
So now we'll have a new hearing on the towing aspect? That's why I'm not, not trying to get-
Well, makes sense.
No, 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 no.
We're going to have a hearing on that. It's okay if we do.
You bring up a good point because now, I think this just regulates junkyards. It doesn't regulate towing operation.
Right.
So I probably didn't get the right details from Buckley.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we do a-
Makes sense because it's two different, it's two different businesses. One has been, one was approved, one has never been approved. So in order to say that we're going to make, that he has to go to planning or zoning, whichever one, he needs to be notified of that and we can't do it unless we have a public hearing.
Well, see, now that they think about it, I'm not sure because this just regulates the junkyard. The, we would treat, I'm thinking now, we would treat the towing operation as if it were any other use that someone started, I mean, despite the passage of time. But we would do that, so public hearing wouldn't necessarily be required. This was only for the decision-
Because it's non-conforming at this point, so you can stop something immediately with non-conformism, right?
Okay, I, I'll call him again tomorrow. I spoke with him at length today, but I will make sure since we're changing the tactic, going just after the towing, that if we just focus on that, then probably public hearing would not be necessary. That does make more sense, I think.
Do we have a, do you have a letter, a draft letter about the towing business yet, or?
No, no.
Okay.
So if he, if he finds out tomorrow, he can just notify us by email and we can-
I'd like the letter to get out as soon as possible.
Yeah, so then we get plan of public hearing before the next meeting.
All right.
Well, because it's going to get on, he's to get on the agenda of the-
Right, do you-
It's too late for January at this point, or it might be too late for January, so.
If you, if you want, I mean, I'll just sign it so they don't have to come back to another meeting for you folks, you know, just like they do a regular violation notice.
Yeah.
So I'll make sure it goes out. Next couple of days, I'll send it to Caroline, ask her to be printed out, come in and sign it. But I am going to talk to the guy. I mean, it's been a while. I just want to let him know that we're just getting another letter in the mail.
Okay, and his next steps?
Yeah, we're coming, yeah, yes.
And it'll be outlined in that, like-
Yes.
Say he needs to contact the planning board.
Right.
And the ZBA for-
ZBA for his planning board, but he needs to suspend the operations.
I mean, I went by last night, about eight thirty, and it was, it was all dark and it was now, well, trucks going in. Usually when I drive by, I see at least one truck coming in or out of there, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. Chief, have you seen any, yeah, so he is still towing, then, clearly.
It's not last night, but I go by, which is fair enough, but.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and the Rollins Road one, I do have a draft letter going, I mean, a draft of the letter that I'm going to modify and send to them because I've been by it a couple of times since, and to me, it's difficult to tell whether or not it's occupied. I mean, it's between two buildings and the windows kind of cover-
Oh, the Rollins Road camper?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
It looks like it's not plugged into anything. It's attached to the garage doors, but it, the other part that was there isn't anymore, so maybe it was a temporary situation.
Yeah. Obviously, clearly, like, it's door open in the winter.
And the Prospect Street lady, I went by after last meeting and once since, and despite the obnoxious display of Christmas lights.
Were they lights on last night?
It didn't, it didn't appear to be occupied.
There's a car on it when I'm by and covering the door, so it's not, I don't think anybody's looking in there.
Same thing as far as storage goes. They're allowed to have storage.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But thank you for checking.
And I know that legal counsel has contacted the other Rollins Road, ACC.
Yes, they sent a good letter, yes.
Oh, they did the one on the other?
On twelve, yes.
That will be resolved soon.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Okay, I don't, I, okay, that was it, all right, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
So these are placeholder by topic for conversation purposes.
Okay, so we have, obviously, clearly, the first article on was the ballot.
But note number, Article Two, we're going to have to, it's working on figuring out who all those, like, what all those fence viewer and tree warden and what all those funny positions are that each have to individually go on the ballot. There is a article, yes, we have to-
Oh, now, because it used to be a town meeting.
Yes, it used to be a-
You all have to go on the ballot.
So that's going to go on the ballot. But there is a article later on this warrant that you can, if you want to choose to include it, that-
To review all of it.
Would delete all those going forward so that it would be the last year, so that we're not including it on the ballot because we've got about twenty minutes worth of things to vote on now.
Alone, there's any letting offenses, then.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, so zoning chairs, you're all going to do three zoning chairs?
Yes.
You're all going to do three, like, the miles.
We have a public hearing scheduled for January eighth at our next planning board meeting for-
These are the actual ones, okay.
So these are the actual topics. Obviously, the language isn't worked up.
Yeah.
The language for that second one is probably quite close to what it's going to be.
Just see if the town will vote, okay. The board select, the board select board, does it mean, okay, that's for-
Throughout the ordinance.
Oh, I see, okay.
Just to allow the board flexibility that should you ever want to appoint a designate for anything that you are responsible for in that ordinance, that in any future time you can designate somebody else to carry out that responsibility.
Makes sense. I know Mr. Croft was pretty clear that we're one of the few towns south of the Notches that actually do this this way anymore. The towns that do things like that maybe have like seven, eight, ten occupants in there.
I'm really hoping they can get us up to nineteen eighty-nine, but.
Right, fair enough.
Yeah.
All right, so then zoning ordinance change, let's see, to see when, Section Eight?
This is about the mixed use, how many apartments can be in a building.
Right, 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 good, okay.
Like, it corrects the inconsistency from two thousand seventeen.
Perfect, perfect, then come to the budget.
So just be thinking to yourselves as an aside, these are in a not quite, but almost random order. There is some strategy about how you might want to order these. You might be thinking about that for future discussion about how we might want to place these differently. My point was just to get them all here for-
Right, yeah, they don't naturally have to go on the sort of short, that makes sense. So then we have operating budget and then contained within that operating budget is a default budget?
Um, thank you for saying that.
Where your separate warrant articles?
No, it is, it is part of the same, I have to add that.
Okay.
So if they vote, now they're voting for the default budget?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Pretty clear. Police cruiser, message fortress, this apartment, town hall boiler, radios for the fire department. Is Mark coming back tonight?
He was meeting with the lady to up at the firefighters.
And then he told me that he was going to come back with a PO for that, so he doesn't tend to come back.
Okay, so I know that you had mentioned that there was some concern-
Yeah, I talked to him tonight.
At the budget committee about this number, the number of radios.
Yes, we, I talked to him about that tonight and he is on board with what we were, so that, so he's going to extend an invitation to the budget maybe to-
So he's going to work that out, that's fine, so, so we don't need to change it. This is what we, we still want to go with.
Nope, that's what I know.
Okay. Construction or police station or and town hall facility, we will have more conversations about that, I'm sure, soon. Closing of trust funds, we'll talk, those are some of the ones we talked about.
Right.
Okay, and there'll be some language there talking about closing slash combining.
Right.
So that'll be clear.
So we need to think about how you want to do which fund into which fund and how many articles you want to address that.
Can we do it all in one, or does it-
You can do it all in one if you want to put Fund A, B, and C into D.
Yep.
Otherwise, yes, you can still combine them, but does that make sense? Because somebody might not like a part of it and the whole thing's going to fail for that.
I would suggest, all the ones that should probably be under CIP, just doing those together and then not, if there's anything else, do a separately.
Oh, isn't the boiler on CIP?
Um, yes, it is. I don't know how, yes. It's not noting that and I need to figure out how much money is coming out of CIP, so, yes, thank you.
So then Article Blank, just see if the town will vote and approve additional sections. So this is Webbworth Street, Pleasant Street.
Yes.
We'll get to that later on in the agenda, but, okay. These are by petition, some of these?
None of these are by petition. These are all proposals for the board to consider.
My apologies.
So-
They've come to us asking us to do this.
Right, and to that, to that end, I would say, we're probably going to, you know, consider that there will be petition, you know.
Right, right. And also keep in mind, we don't have to, just because it's on this piece of paper, this is just a roadmap. We don't have to, well, except for some, we don't have to include all the, all the warrant if we don't want to.
Right.
So for some reason, if the select were rejected, the approving of the streets coming under, under town-
The board has the authority over what articles get on the warrant. So there's been a request by the developer to have the town approve those sections of roadway, but if an engineer review or the town otherwise finds that the work is not satisfactory and ready for approval, then the board would choose not to include it on the warrant.
But they have a time limit, they have to give us that information.
So they have submitted the request. It is on the agenda for later in this meeting about whether you might want to ask the town engineer to go review the paving situation to see if it would meet town standards in the plan that was approved.
Spoiler alert, I think we probably should, so. Ask the town engineer, anyway, but we'll get to that in a bit. I already lost one, please.
So, so the next one is the recreation committee.
Yeah.
And I would say, Denise, that you and I ought to talk about this one. I lifted the language from last year's historical trust fund that was established, which is for a specific purpose. And it reminded me that we need to note in the article, what is the purpose of the fund? What are the funds going to be used for? So we can talk about that separately.
I have to go see somebody for a second.
Then we also have the CIP fund, which we've already discussed, the coal work repair fund, which we've already voted on, the capital land trust, we've already voted on, and it comes with the surveys and related expenses. See if the town will vote, you just took the same exact language, right?
Yes.
Some of five thousand to finance land surveys and related expenses that may be incurred in the system, private landowners, any conservation easements, options. This just comes straight from that other fund, right? It's not from a direct application.
Yes. If there is a request, so it doesn't happen unless a landowner comes with a request that is approved for such purpose. Okay. So my question for this last blank article is, all of these antiquated positions in town, do we want to have them, if the board wishes to do away with these positions, would you want to do so in one article, in which case, somebody might really care about one of those positions, which would make the whole thing fail? Or you can have seven things to approve at the ballot?
But then if they fail, you have to put every single one of them on the warrant, I mean, on an article again, or on the ballot.
Again, separately, or something, just something to think about.
So it's not something that the board can do because it's an appointment, not an election? It can't do it after the March?
It's been an elected position, elected at town meeting, so we can't, the board doesn't have the authority to change that. They're elected positions.
Oh, it's elected by the people then, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So we have surveyors of wood and lumber, fence viewer and tree warden.
So in theory, like, it may be possible to put an article on the warrant to change those positions from elected to appointed, and that would be another way to handle this.
I think there's a better way to do it.
So that way, you can, you can keep the positions, but it wouldn't help you for this year.
So, yeah, we still have to put it on the ballot for each and every one of them, but they may be changing it to be, you know, in a-
Appointment versus an elected position. Which would be more efficient, too, in that way, those who respect and honor history in those positions can do so.
I think it's sad to have it going even though, you know, I'm-
And those three people would be delighted to keep their spots in shape.
Yeah.
Oh, we have parts in work, too. All right, so we need to decide whether or not we want to do that or not, so. In the meantime, we have to include the four offices, so. All right, anything else for the warrants that we need to know about tonight?
I don't believe so. We'll be revisiting.
And the budget, wandering here, was just, was the-
That's just a, I think that's just a placeholder and it's on the warrant, and it's also about your ongoing budget process updates with your-
Sure, so we'll get to that, we'll come back to that.
Well, I don't have to go now because Harry was able to come home, so.
Oh, okay, so you're here.
Lovely, thanks, very good.
So we can go back to our regularly scheduled program, I guess.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, I think, anything else for Carol? All right, then. Thank you.
Sure thing.
We'll go back to the agenda, fire. Fire chief isn't here. I guess it's got to be covered every once in a while, so.
He is now. Items of business, these will be the last two POs that I will be submitting this, this year.
All right.
First one is fourteen forty-eight, and it kind of ties in with some of the discussion that we had previous about protective clothing. I had four, five members just get measured because their gear, like we've said, is shelf life- Had four, five members just get measured because their gear, like we've said, has shelf life, and they haven't had the shelf life. So they come in, measure them, they'll, we'll have it in six weeks or so by the time they get it all manufactured. We had had a PO a few weeks ago for some other miscellaneous protective clothing equipment. So there's like $2,000 left in this line item, and that's why we had that discussion before about the hose line item. Because 1448, the Bergeron Protective Clothing, for those various ensemble items.
How much?
Make sure they're gonna go someplace, $4,600.
Oh, 46.
46, I don't know, 46 or 47?
You had 47.
That's it.
To distance at 46?
Yeah, and that's actually just an estimate on the high side, because I think I wrote on there, ensemble was 7, 3,400 bucks, it's 1,700 bucks. It's actually 1,682 dollars for the set, so I just rounded it up again, so it'd be actually
So, I'll move purchase order 1448 to Bergeron Protective Clothing, and the amount of $4,600 for protective clothing.
Move to second, okay, any discussion?
Now, does that include boots and helmets as well, so it's top to bottom?
Yep, two complete ensembles, one set of pants, there's a helmet in there, there's a set of boots in there. And, I actually threw in some of the numbers this time, just because maybe it strikes home a little reality on how much this stuff actually costs.
What is the shelf life of the?
10 years is the shelf life for a set of turnout gear.
So what it says, two complete turnout ensembles, that includes helmet, boots, pants, jacket?
That includes totes and pants, that's all.
That's it, okay.
And you can see the other things there, if you want a set of boots, what's that, 300 bucks, no, 200 bucks for boots, 300 bucks for a helmet, about another 100 for a set of gloves, about 50 for a hood, $5,000 for a radio, $6,000 for an air pack. It's all considered as ensemble.
Alright, and it's coming out of protective clothing and you're gonna take the rest of it out of the hose line?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's still gonna leave money up in that hose line, so it's still gonna all fit together.
You're assuming getting out of the hose there, Ken?
I know.
No? Alright, any other discussions? Alright, so purchase order 1448 is been moved in second, are all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. Do you hear that?
No.
Nope, that one stays with you folks, and I'll give you the rest of this. My second one's 1449, the National Foam is for three tubs of firefighting foam concentrate. Because when we originally bought the engine, we had two, it has a 30 gallon tank, we had two tubs, it was five gallons a piece, we put that in. We used some of it, so this is to harden it, where we should be having on the engine.
Alright, so I move purchase order 1449 for National Foam for three, what you call it, tubs?
Tubs.
Tubs of Class A firefighting foam concentrate for $300. Getting supplies.
Purchase order 1449, so moved in second, any conversation, questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
By my estimate, it's still gonna be close to $7,000 left in the apartment budget. Anything else that I have to show up? I have no more purchase orders that I'm gonna be submitting. The other thing that's happening on Thursday is Townsend Energy's coming in to service the heating unit in the fire station. That's, that's a wrap.
Have you turned in your last payroll?
Yes, today, it goes in tomorrow.
I forgot to tell you that the budget committee would like to see your formula and how you determine your payroll. If you can come up with something, the process.
Pretty simple, I remember sitting there a couple of weeks ago, explaining it to them, so.
They wanted to write in.
Fine, we can discuss that tonight when they show up at the fire station.
Good, okay.
Wrap it all up in one big file swoop.
Thank you.
Anything else for the party?
Actually, those two bills I submitted can go in this little folder, and that goes to Caroline with some other stuff in there.
You don't, coming next week, or?
Probably not.
Well, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all of you, and good holidays and everything, and enjoy it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I wish. We're doing the agenda in order, George, come on up, please. I think the police chief has a larger presentation to shoot at, so, you may be asking more questions, so.
Alright. I'm gonna, you wanna do something with the baler, I have a PO for that, so baler, if you want to. PO for $17,700 for the buyout of the baler.
Alright, why do you move in, Walter?
So move purchase order 1496 to Atlantic Recycling for $17,700 for the buyout of the baler.
Second.
Okay, so, my understanding is, after looking at a quarter, third quarter numbers, or the fourth quarter, actually, where we should be, have sufficient funds to pay for the salary?
Yeah, we maxed out every line in the highway and transportation budget for the rest of the year. Talking about salaries and all of that stuff that goes, and we also put in what we knew, and there is enough money in his own budget to cover for baler.
You don't have any other POs in there for repairs to things we don't know about, or?
I have another PO for plow, if we want to buy a plow, I got a used one, I found a used one for about $1,500.
No, but I mean, we don't have any, any big repairs or anything?
No.
No, so I think, yeah, Caroline knew most of them, and we maxed it out.
If she slipped by half, they'd have, so.
Okay, so we don't have any outstanding obligations, and so, and we have sufficient funds to pay for this? Any other questions or concerns? Time that I'd like to be known.
Okay, so, did we consider that we're going to let him keep the other one and fix it? So, that, with that 500, it's out of the equation as in revenue? Just make sure that's, no, okay, I know it has nothing to do with this.
We haven't done nothing with that yet, so.
Okay, okay.
We're still waiting for the electrician, who was off, they were closed last week, he was in Texas on a business trip, so he should be coming back, and I could be hearing from him this week to get this wired up, it's a big one.
Yep.
So he should be operating soon.
Okay.
Alright, purchase order 1496 is removed in second, is there any others second? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Go forth and fail.
We'll take care of that next year.
I'll see your boss, George.
No, I have an application that came forward for work at the transfer station a couple of days a week, and a backup to work at the Highway Department, we need him, in Mark Kucha. And I was just wondering if we, if we could go forward with that to get us back up to full staff at the transfer station?
We had budgeted for Saturday, right?
No, this is a, we, we were down, we're down two, we're down, oh, three, two people doing it, that's wrong. So, this is the, just to bring it back up to full staff.
Was that, without any consideration?
It was mostly the highway department that we were using, utilizing much.
Those funds should be there, the only thing they're having to use, any overtime. You know, for that and stuff.
For that, right, okay.
We can go down to two people, but it's, you know, once we start bailing and stuff, we're gonna need that to do it.
And, and Mark's already applied, do we have?
Mark's applied and stuff, yeah, I've already talked with him, and I have his application, I actually have it at the shop.
Why don't you, do you want him to come on this week?
No, well, this week, I can call him and just, you know, as long as I get a permission to give him a call, and let's let him say, well, bring him on. If you want to meet him, we, I mean, you had known him, so.
I met him a couple times.
By the time you meet him first of the year, then you don't have to deal with any other things.
Well, by the time we get him to the, to the process, like he said, he's not, you know, just gonna take, just gonna take to the first.
You can reach out to him, and we can do it officially, then bring the application in next week, and we sign off on it. There's a place for us to sign at the bottom, isn't there? As the higher authority.
I love that one.
Oh, okay.
No, no, he application I see, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just recommend we start the first week in January and just have, and then you don't have to do any of that payroll stuff.
Yeah, you'd be better off, I guess.
You know, right?
Denise moves that we hire Mark Kucha for road agent now, transfer station attendant beginning January 1?
He said he has a CDL, so he said that would be a plus for
Okay, so you're moving that we hire Mark Kucha as a transfer station attendant starting January 1, 2019?
No, second.
Your second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Perfect, thank you, let Mark know and say thank you for stepping forward.
Okay. I brought up about buying a plow for the speech day last week, huh? New one is 2542 to broadcast. I have gone online and purchased one in Belcher Town, Mass, at Orchard Hills Farm Equipment. They have a used one for 1399, and we have to change that, the fittings on to match up at broadcast, which may be up to $200. I'm fine with the used plow. It's choice, you know, you can make, I still believe we need a plow to do the sidewalk, you know.
Denise, what do you think?
What was that new one for?
It's 1399.
The new one was?
No, new one, 25, 546.
25, and so this one's 13, 14?
1,400.
1,400?
Yeah.
1,400 plus 200 for?
Yeah, maybe fittings, if you place the high dog fittings, they're probably looking at 1,600 versus 2,600.
What about delivery?
We'll think that.
What is it, so you'll use a town vehicle?
Yeah.
Do you know where Belcher Town is, George?
Yeah, but about two and a half hours away.
Just wanna make sure you understand how far away it is, okay.
No, I mean, it would cost more to have it delivered.
Yeah.
It's more your time, I think.
Nothing in the forecast we could
No, you know, right, sorry. What are your thoughts?
I like the price tag better than a new one, and I, I trust you when you say that you need this piece of equipment, so I think we should move forward with it.
I think, you know, plowing with a bucket, you can't, it, it all stays in front of you. At least with a plow, you're pushing it off to the side as you're going along, you've gotta keep dumping it, you know, and turning and stuff, and actually the bucket's wider than, I mean.
What, what do you mean bucket, like the?
On a skid steer, no, the skid steer is, the machine's six feet wide, unfortunately, our side will suffice. So we're limited to what we can do with it as it is. You know, so, the machine doesn't stay on the sidewalk well, and doing it with a bucket and stuff, and it's just so much easier to have the snow coming off in front of you, so you can keep moving along, instead of being pushed off the sidewalk. I, it's, and
So it's snow blower attachment, is that what it is?
No, the snow blower we have, we already have the snow blower attachment, but when it gets wet, heavy snow, you're plugged up within 10, 15 feet, it's, it's more difficult to use it.
Looks like an actual plow.
So it's a little like a hoe on a pickup truck, but more smaller?
Right.
Okay.
Right, instead of using the front end loader part of it, I mean, it's, it goes where that goes, it's just, you know, attaches there, but at least you'd be able to drive along and have the snow come off the front of your vehicle, instead of staying You know, you have to keep picking it up and turning and dumping and picking up and dumping. I didn't make the purchase, but I can make one out right now, and what I have to do, have, have a check out, so I'm gonna have to have Caroline get the checks approved.
You need to use your tomorrow, I think, so you're doing it this week. So, you said that you, you are gonna be able to use that after, if you imagine getting this articulated?
Yeah, that, that project that we were supposed to go to let the transfer station and stuff, and if we needed, outside the transfer station, we still have, you know, if we decide to go with the sidewalk, maybe, this is, we're looking at two years anyways.
Okay, alright.
You know, so it's for Orchard Hills Farm Equipment. In Belcher Town, Mass, so you're familiar with the location, I think.
They, I know, I know near Fitchburg.
Part of the city, isn't it?
It's pretty massive.
No, exactly, it's near, it's near Amherst, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. No, I think it's the town right next to it. Can we make the motion to include the fact that we have to make sure that we can verify that there is money left in his budget after we just paid for the baler? And if there isn't money in his budget, we won't be able to get it. Can we just make, they'll have to check with Caroline tomorrow, because I don't know how much was left after we just paid for that.
Oh, why don't we do this?
She told me there was $49,000 available, but
After that, after the baler?
In your budget?
Yeah.
Just like that, I know what, yeah. But, but was that after paying for the baler or before paying for the?
That was, no, that was part of the
The total, right, okay, so how much was the baler again?
17, 17.
Oh, then we should be outside of it.
It's still in the 20.
Okay.
It's on 1,600, just the rest.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it, now, to them, it's gonna be, if he has the fittings, I can get them there, but if not, I'll have to get the fittings for broadcast at the half show.
So why don't you make the purchase order up to 1,600? And then, if not, then you can purchase the, purchase them through broadcast. Is it matter of your equipment line?
Yeah, yes, official.
I move purchase order 1498 to Orchard Hill Farms Equipment for a used plow for the skid steer, not to exceed 1,600.
Second.
Okay, purchase order 1498 is removed in second, is there any other discussion? When would you be able to take delivery of this?
This week, if we get the check.
Checks are being cut this week, so. Alright, any other discussion?
Send the mail, Caroline, just give her a heads up, or should I just get here first thing in the morning?
You've been sent, you know, you can't come in the morning, probably, you asked, but, maybe just under a quick note tonight. Alright, all those in favor, purchase order 1498, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
That it? Uh, yes, I purchase orders, yes.
Okay.
Lewis Tree approached me about some tree cutting along the power lines, there's a couple of them on Spuce, Locust, and Mechanic Street, however, I don't believe they're in our property line.
Okay.
So I referred them to the owners of the, of the abutting property, says, there is a couple of their trees, and they're right under the power lines. They wanted to know, they can cut them, and I told them, I said, I gotta get proof for the board, but I don't believe they're in our right of way. I read away, what, 15 feet off the center line, off of Mechanic Street?
Perhaps?
I would guess, it can't be much more than that in these side streets.
And say, I don't think it could be more than that either, but
I measured this, they're over 15 feet, and they're actually putting the pole line, the power lines out, and it doesn't look like there was a tree that
So is the tree service that you're talking about, they wanted us to pay for, or someone that was contracted?
They are doing it, they are the one working for Eversource, but it's a permission thing.
You should be asking the landlord.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna ask.
I thought that's what you meant, but
No, it's to get permission to, to cut them down, they're
Either way, you meant, it was right, it was right, you said.
So they need to contact the
I told them that they should contact the landowners if they're gonna be cutting some of their trees, which even if they are in the line, they're in the, with the line, you still should get permission to be cutting some of the stuff they cut. So, yeah.
Anything else, Boris?
No, I, I went up, I got a complaint about some workman down on Highland, apartment house on the top of the hill. They dug along the edge of the road over the weekend, but it was actually a benefit for us, it was mud, they took out, and they put a foot and a half of crushed gravel in there to shore it up, so I went, looked at it today, there's no damage to the road or anything.
Okay.
But I complained, I just figured I'd go look at it, and
Right.
He asked if we could, is the gas line in? I said, yep, you can, next April.
Right.
No digging in the roads now until
He told me to come and get a form.
And he asked to come in and get the permits.
Perfect, okay, alright.
Was someone in the neighborhood complained about it, or, okay?
So then we have, is that all you have, Boris?
Yeah, Stephanie.
So we have posting of roads, I wanna hold off on that, like I said, until we're finished with all the budget stuff. Then we also have the right of way behind Kelwyn Drive, there's some tree issues apparently. Then we also have the right of way behind Kelwin Drive, there's some tree issues apparently back there.
Yeah, I went down, looked at some trees, they are a couple of very tall bullpines, dead, or dying.
Dying, okay.
I know a lot of branches have come off, a lot of pieces have broke off the trees, it's.
Right, are they very, very tall pines?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, I already looked at them and it, it's actually my brother-in-law's house.
Okay.
And I told him, I says, there's no money to take these trees down, he says, there's no big rush, he said, when, when there is some money to have them looked at and taken down or.
Well, I'm wondering if they're.
Man, my thought is, is.
If they're in really bad shape, there's some mother nature taking them down and I don't want them to fall anyway.
Well, I don't think they're dead to that point.
Okay.
And he doesn't, neither, but you know, like you said, the branches are coming down occasionally.
Right.
That, now, the story, what is this, I don't know the story with this right away.
It's an easement, right, it's the easement to the conservation land, I think it was, is it right back there? Isn't that right back there, right?
Yes, so, I mean, it's getting grown in.
So it's ours, I mean, that's the.
Okay, so, I mean, do you want the rest of these small trees taken out before they get too tall?
Well, if you're.
I mean, there's no access there if you don't, if that keeps growing in.
So we have a bush hog now, right, we can go and.
Well, that would, no, it'd be more going in with the chipper and cutting it.
Is it that big?
Oh, yeah, they're getting, you know, they're starting to get some size doors and stuff and they're, they're not gonna be able to access it with a truck, they could actually reach those trees from my brother-in-law's driveway with a crane. That's how close they are to, I mean.
Right.
Fifty, sixty feet across the yard.
But the rest of it, we don't want becoming that again, so.
No, I mean, and you've got a lot of big ones in that, down that stretch of road.
Okay, so.
So are we talking about, it's a hushoe type, are we talking about?
Behind the houses.
Behind the houses.
Between there and Pine Crest.
Oh, it's this way, towards Dover, not towards the parking lot?
No.
Okay, so how.
The other side, Somersworth.
It kinda goes in the middle, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's so, it's such a messed up.
I know, but behind, like, when you go in the hushroom here, is it, behind it, that's where the conservation area is, right? And it goes out behind the mall thing.
And you had, you bear to the right, sort of, sort of like a dead end there?
Yep, yep.
That's it, there, all that.
Oh, you're talking about that Clarys and, um, what's it named, Liz?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's.
You start there and go down behind the houses on the right-hand side of the loop.
Oh, that's what you're talking about, you're not talking about in the rear?
Well, it is the rear, but.
It goes all the way.
Depending on your perspective, I guess.
But Kelwin is the whole street, is the whole loop.
Yeah, but in all.
One is Somersworth and one is Rollinsworth, but this one was renamed.
Yeah, but, right, but apparently it still is, right.
Okay, so it's on that side of it then? Is that conservation over there? I thought it was in the rear.
It is in the rear.
Okay, okay.
But it's a strip, to access all that in the rear is, is the town's right of way and it's a conservation easement to get in there.
Okay, okay, and how do you get in there?
At the dead end side of, when you come in Kelwin and go there right.
Yeah.
To the dead end.
Yeah.
Apparently it starts at the end of the dead end and goes down behind all the houses on the right-hand side.
And keeps on going after.
Down to the corner behind the house down at the bottom of the hill apparently.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can't acce, I don't believe you can access it from Pine Crest, I.
But you can't access it from there?
Maybe in one, maybe in one of the two spots.
But you can't exit from the, the parking lot and go from behind and go that way instead of being behind somebody's house?
Obe, that's where the trees are in the, in the easement.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned with one, that there may be trees that are all responsibility falling on someone's house.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And I don't want to exacerbate the problem, but there are smaller trees that could be taken down, we probably should be looking at that in the springtime.
Yeah, I mean, some of that stuff we can do with wood, you know, I mean, when it's, if we don't get a lot of soil.
We have a chipper that you wanna.
That we could.
We have a chipper, don't we?
We have the chipper, that's.
You have a chainsaw?
And we have, and we have some reed and cut trees.
Perfect, maybe we can work on the wood trees.
Yeah, cause I mean, the worst time for the trees to fall is in the winter.
We do need to.
But those are gonna need a crane to.
Coggers into the fact that it's conservation land, so I don't know what holds the hold, is it Selk, maybe? We probably want to consult with them before we start. Southeast Land Trust, own, I think, holds the easement to access it, but it's in the town right of way part, that one thing, I don't want us to go.
Yeah, I don't want, I wouldn't go down.
Too crazy and into it and we cut down a couple of their trees and they get upset, so.
But it is getting grown in.
You should be concerned about that, okay, so, but you don't believe that the trees are.
They might.
Are, are that.
Right into that extreme, but you, you know, I mean, they're pines and with heavy snow and stuff, you're gonna need branches to come down and win.
Yeah.
But I don't think the whole tree would come down, it's coming down in section, you know, pieces.
Well, for my house, I don't want, I don't want.
I agree with you.
Coming down on my house, so.
I, uh, it's gonna require a crane and.
Especially if we're notified about it, so.
But he, he said, you know, he wanted to make us aware of it and.
So we'll keep it on our list, you keep a list of.
I do, and we could act.
Know that, so.
We, uh, after the first year, we could put, get that one with the other one on general Sullivan, that we couldn't get to do with the crane this year.
Right.
So we get those.
Three budget, eight budgets.
When, yeah, whatever budget we have for it.
By the way, there'll be money for trees, so.
Okay.
Let's just on this side of it, anything else for George? Anything else for us?
Lots. No, I think everything's good right now, I am gonna be having the pickup service next week for the first time, but.
You got one now?
What?
The oil change and the pickup's about fifty-five.
Oh, you have a pickup service, I was like, what?
I bet you said.
What, pickup, pickup what?
No, no, pickup truck service, I got to George, okay.
We are.
We're a little bit out of shower right now, so, it's about your time.
Okay.
It won't be.
Major difference.
Okay. Alright.
So.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Have a great night. Are you coming in next Thursday?
Will, it'll be too.
Not only.
Oh, okay, Wednesday?
A Wednesday.
Wednesday night it will be in.
Monday night, I meant, next Monday. I didn't say what day it was, next meeting on Monday night, you're coming in.
Monday, I, if I need something, I'll be in for that, but I'll be here. I'll be here Wednesday night if the board's here.
Okay.
So.
You guys should stay happy holidays, because we won't see you for New Year's either, anyways.
Alright.
Have a nice go through, so, alright.
See ya.
Chief, please come in, I know you're here for.
Good evening, sir.
I really am trying to do this.
It's actually interesting to see all the other departments.
Okay, three weeks ago.
Yes.
We seized a dog and held it for ten days under Araby's hold. The dog, uh, bit a young girl in the face and the owners could not produce proof that the dog had been vaccinated.
Right.
And come to find out, the dog had not been vaccinated for quite some time. So, K nine chaos sent us a bill for three hundred dollars for one Araby's hold. Purchase order number one five four two to K nine chaos, it is all come out of our animal fees, we will in turn send the owner a, a bill for the, for the service.
We'll move purchase order fifteen forty-two to K nine chaos for three hundred dollars for Araby's hold.
Second?
I was the, uh, little girl.
She's doing okay.
Any other questions? So purchase order fifteen forty-two is a move to seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Is it not the law to have Araby's hold?
It is the law to have Araby's hold, so. Yeah, okay, last Thursday, I sent the four tourists over to the city of Dover for repair, the steering wheel, you had to fight to turn it. Uh, purchase order number one five four three to the city of Dover to repair a steering shaft assembly, uh, five hundred dollars. And that'll come out of a vehicle maintenance line item.
Can I ask, I'll, we'll do this, but I had a question, well, was the dog not registered either then?
Correct.
Okay, anyways, but enough of that.
Okay, alright, I move purchase order one five four three to the city of Dover for repairs on Cruiser seventy-three for the steering shaft assembly for five hundred dollars even.
Seconded that? Alright, do we have it back now?
We didn't pick it up today.
It's working, running.
It's working fine. And, you know, it, it takes so long for the city of Dover to send invoices sometimes, we'll probably end up paying that in twenty nineteen, actually, but we'll get it approved in the summer.
Any other questions? Purchase order fifteen forty-two is moved to seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, Stephen, um, no, alright.
Is that an exact amount?
I mean.
Is that an exact amount, do you know that that is?
There's gonna be less than five hundred.
So you're not a hundred percent sure?
I'm not, I'm just.
So we don't wanna pay the bill, kids, and not at this year's, alright.
That's all I have of purchase orders. I have prepared a, a couple of amendments to the housing ordinance.
Okay.
I meant to send them to Tom today, but with FEMA and a couple of meetings I had today, I didn't do them, I'll send them first thing in the morning. Um, he'll review them this week, we'll finalize them and then, so you'll have them on the, the agenda hopefully next Monday. That's all that I have for you folks.
Anything else for the chief, um, besides about a new police station? Don't worry, talk about that next.
No, that's what we need to talk about.
Alright, alright, so we have further down on the agenda, police station, town hall, warrant article. How are we coming along with, with, um, doing anything about the town hall and police station for this coming year?
Well, all of the, the numbers have been revised and they've all been submitted to the committee.
Okay, so.
I can forward it to you.
Okay, so is the committee going to meet then and make a recommendation as to what the town should or should not be looking at, or the select board should or should not be looking at?
I thought we voted to go forward, so.
Well, we did, but not, but at that time we did have to revise numbers, so I would suggest we go just meet really quick and say, you know. One or the other, or.
Yep.
You know, is there an option of presenting both and having, I don't know, but we should talk about.
Okay, I'll call him anyway.
So what I thought the process was going to look like, all many, many months ago. I think before you've been on the board, was that we would, we would present to the townspeople a number of options and they would let us know what they thought they liked. Backup, that, the building space needs committee was going to meet, come up with a number of options, gather information about that, have a hearing, that, we did that. Vet some of those and then make recommendations to the select board, the select board was then going to say, okay, this is option A, build a new police station. Option B, build a new police station, town hall combo, option C, I don't know, build, I don't know, what, pick your building, whatever you wanna build, demolish off the back and build. I mean, there were different options that could happen, um, we're running out of time to actually have any of that conversation with people. So I, I'm getting a little, little skittish about whether or not this is gonna happen for this war.
Well, the last public hearing that we had about the, the facility, um, we presented, you know, the Rollinsroad site.
Right.
The Greenview site, the Silver Street site.
Okay.
And, and we talked about this building a little bit as well.
Right.
And I think the consensus out of that meeting was to, um, go forward, uh, either at the Silver Street site or the possibility of the Greenview Drive site.
Right, okay.
So now we're down to the point where based upon that, out of those two, it apparently, apparently it's just going to be the Silver Street site.
Okay.
So, since then, we've got revised figures for one floor only, police only.
Okay.
And town hall for second floor.
So that can be our.
So those could be the two options.
Okay, alright, so I wanna make sure we're all on the same, I'm on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is still that opportunity to have a public hearing with multiple options. Okay, that's, that's important, I think, so people, I don't want people just to come in and say, okay, it's a combination, no, we're not gonna do it. I want people to have a little bit of, I want people to have options, so when, um, when do you think that you all can get the committee together to have a?
I'll send something out tonight or tomorrow, right, to see when the availability is.
Okay.
And we'll do it as soon as we can.
Okay. What else, I wanna ask why you are here. No, go ahead.
My only concern is that we haven't addressed what we will do with this thing.
There is that, yeah.
That we're sitting in, that if we go forward with Silver, I mean, with the new complex, that's the only thing that I think that, I don't know. To me, it's hard to say what we're gonna do, then, because I mean, but, I don't know, cause that was brought up at last week's meeting by Breen.
It was, yes, I think it was last week, right, yeah, and there are, yeah, there's still a number of unanswered questions in my mind that I want. I would like to get the answer, and that is one of them, what do we do with this, with our building right now, so.
Well, the thing is that though, as much as I'm concerned with, we don't have a plan yet, we also are a year and a half out, too, I mean, it's, they're, we're gonna have to be in here for the next year if that happens, if not longer, right? I mean, I mean, it's gonna be at least a year.
Oh, at least, at least, yeah.
Um, so, you know.
And that's why we have the boiler on the, on the wall, because even, we're basically, best case scenario, if it, if everything got passed. And you got a new town hall, police station built on Silver Street, it's gonna be at least a year and a half. And you've got a boiler that's on board on time, so.
So we have to do that, but.
Right, so, okay, but there are still other, yeah, there are.
So we can talk at, at the police meeting and see if we can come up with a plan on, on this building, but.
Well, I mean, just, you don't have to have a plan, just, just recommendations that you can make to the select board and then we can try to figure out. So.
Well, we've discussed a couple of, a couple of options already about the town hall, so.
Okay. Alright.
Will this develop or whatever the case might be, so.
So we'll just have to put it in writing as a part of the proposal to the board.
That would be helpful, that would be helpful, and then we will start our part of the process. And we don't have a lot of time before the market war, so, and we have deadlines that we would have to meet for bond, if we were gonna go to bond group.
Well, Caroline had meant, put something in here about that, um, that if she's looking for permission to proceed in getting, where was it?
Well, it's part of this, it's not, it's part of the, uh, police station, town hall, warrant article.
Oh, okay.
If we are really considering doing anything, we don't have a proposal yet in front of us, she needs permission to talk to bond counsel.
Because it will cost something to do that.
It does cost money to just have a conversation.
With them, so that's what she was looking for.
There are attorneys, they like, they bill a lot, or something.
So, yeah, um, I don't know when we have to do that, though, after they propose, after we send a proposal to the board?
I mean, I don't want to just give blanket, you know, carte blanche here, just go talk to bond counsel, I mean, we gotta have something.
No, no, I know, so the process is after we give you our proposal.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was saying, excuse me.
The, as the board either accepts it or go, to go forward or not.
Yes.
And if it's going forward, then then we give her permission to talk to bond counsel.
Yes, 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 okay, so, just wanted, before you leave, I wanna make sure we've got everything covered. So we have, you're all gonna get together with the committee, hopefully in the coming weeks. To, um, to ratify one plan or another, to move forward to the select board, recommendation, and then we can move. Alright, you've already got us numbers, I appreciate that, um, anything else, I'm not thinking of, so now, will there be another public hearing, or no? Oh, yeah, there'll be at least one.
Yeah.
There'll be more than one, there's gonna need to be at least one, just for the idea.
I think, once it's proposed to go forward and bring it to the board, I think the board has to have a public hearing.
Yes, yes, we will start having.
Then we have to have a kind of a story.
If we go to bond, then there are, there are more than one opportunity, a requirement to hear it, so. Alright, anything else for the police chief, though? I feel like this is gonna be a longer conversation, I'm sorry. Antipathetic, yeah, sorry, but I feel like I'm forgetting to ask you something.
Well, you know, it reached me, if it pops up later, or tomorrow, or in case, might be, yes, so.
How are we doing staff wise, the same?
Yeah, good question. Sean had a operation on his liver a week and a half ago. He's going in next week to operate on the other half of the liver, we anticipate we probably won't see him for many, many months at this point. Jamie is scheduled, oh, I, I do have one more time, so, Jamie is scheduled to come back tomorrow.
Oh, okay, I thought he already came back, oh, yeah.
So we'll see what happens.
About the last week, I'm a week behind.
I have, well, it's just a rumor, so I won't mention it, but.
Should we go into non-public sessions?
No, no.
Okay.
Officer Handglock has about sixty-four hours of vacation time.
Wow.
Remaining.
Okay.
That he has to use, uh, between now and June.
Oh.
And of course, in January, he accumulates even more.
Right.
My, my concern is, is that, um, if he has to use it all up by June of next year, then if we don't have Sean back and possibility of another vacancy. Um, we're gonna have a severe shortage of employees between January and June of next year. we're gonna have a severe shortage of employees between January and June of next year. So I've come up with this proposal. We pay him forty hours of vacation time this year. This way here, next year, we're not paying someone to cover his shift for those forty hours. And it makes it a lot easier for the schedule later on. So if we take forty hours, it's eight hundred and eight dollars. There's plenty of surplus left in my line item, there's plenty of surplus left in Jamie's line item, and there's plenty of surplus in Scott Stevens' line item to take care of that eight hundred and eight dollars. And he's willing to do that.
So you're buying out?
So he'll, we're buying out forty hours.
One week of vacation for this year?
For this year.
Okay. So he still has a carryover?
Yeah, he has some. Twenty, twenty hours carryover.
So it's more manageable.
The policy is that they can carry over what they have, but they have to use it within six months.
We have to use it within six months.
Okay, because then you're gonna recruit it again. Do you get it all at once, or do you recruit monthly or weekly?
It accrues, it accrues, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, but they can carry forward, is there a limit, what they can carry forward?
No.
Okay, alright. But he's on board with this?
Yes, yeah. So I'm asking the board to, for someone to submit a motion that we pay him forty hours of the...
Of his vacation.
Of his vacation time. Buyback.
I'll make that motion, that we pay, we pay him forty hours of, in lieu of taking his vacation, we pay him the forty-eight hours due to unexpected man-hours available. It's not just because, but it's a reason.
So, it makes sense to me, too, but, so are we setting ourselves up for other officers that are, that are gonna be angry that they want this, or they're not getting it, or they haven't gotten it?
Well, everyone else has used the majority, one officer has maxed out his vacation.
Right.
That's why he's not getting paid.
Right, right.
Lieutenant is almost, used up all of his vacation time, he's gonna, you know, whatnot, but, no, I don't think. And we can certainly say that these are extenuating circumstances. We're not setting precedent here, but right now, because of the anticipated manpower shortages, these certainly are extenuating circumstances.
But my motion was to say that we have a man-hour shortage is making it necessary, so it's not setting a precedent because it's a situation that's out of our control.
Yeah, I mean, the precedent is a shortage of staff.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we are more than...
If it came up again, that this is the precedent.
Well, yeah, that's true, but then we would probably consider it again if you down three men, or a woman, whatever.
Exactly, yes, yeah.
So, I mean, come pay him one way or the other. You gotta pay him when he takes vacation, or you're gonna pay him when...
Well, you're right, and this way here, we're not paying someone overtime in 2019 to cover his shift, and a part-time covering those shifts, so, in the long run, we're saving a few bucks.
We're saving a few bucks, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Are you sure you don't wanna go into non-public session and talk about personnel? Are you giving me heart palpitations? Really? I don't feel pressured, I am, but...
Maybe next Monday.
Okay. Christmas miracle, okay. Perfect, alright, anything else for the chief?
I've catched you here long enough, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna have a much longer conversation.
Can I talk longer about what the chief, did you, you have obviously posted for sergeants?
Well, we posted, we posted for an officer.
For an officer. So, and you haven't gotten any valid, or some, any applications that you can use, clearly, so...
Well, we have applicants, but...
That they don't reach.
But certainly they don't rise to the level of a sergeant's entry level.
So what did you, did you advertise a price?
No.
Okay, okay, so you haven't advertised, so that's not the reason? So you're just putting it out there that you're advertising for a police officer, but you're not getting the candidates that you would like to have working around. Okay, so, the reason why I'm asking is because we had a conversation that, was it thirty-nine-five?
Thirty-nine-nine-nine-nine.
Thirty-nine-nine-nine-nine is the starting pay for a police officer. And I would have assumed that every time you had a cost of living raise, that that would go up. And you're saying it doesn't, right?
So, I'm not saying you're, you know what you're saying.
If a salary is thirty-nine-nine-nine-nine...
The starting salary is thirty-nine, though.
Right, but if a police officer gets a cost of living raise, then I would have assumed that that salary would then go up by that cost of living raise because it's an officer.
The starting salary?
The starting salary, right. What, I mean, you're never gonna be where you wanna be if you don't continue to increase the salaries like you do everyone else. That's my point.
I got you, right.
So thirty-nine-nine, he's not getting the candidate levels that he wants to have.
What was the starting salary five years ago, thirty-nine-nine?
Five years ago, it would've been thirty-eight or thirty-seven, somewhere. So it does go up slightly, however, the problem with that is, is that the officer that's closest to him is like at forty and some change. So to start, the new guy out at forty-something, they're very close to the officer that started a year ago, or three years ago before him. So you need to maintain a little bit. However, the only change is, is obviously, you know, we've gone to the merit system for the pay. So at some point, there is a possibility that a newer hired officer could actually make more money than someone who's been here longer than that person.
But merit system has its pros and cons.
Yes.
You know, because, because, I mean, if you have a good officer and their merit, they get them maximum scale, then that is a good thing. However, if you have an officer who needs improvements, and that position isn't getting... Then you're getting yourself right back where you were. I mean, I understand why you're doing it, and I commend you for doing it, but your salaries are not, are staying stagnant because of the person that's in it, not the position. So we either, we either, in my opinion, need to have a sliding scale for starting, you know, say thirty-nine to forty-four, or whatever, and let him have that authority to recommend something to us within that scale. I mean, thirty-nine-nine is not very much money. I mean, I'm just saying, some of the things we're doing are good things, but they have, they have issues with it if someone leaves. That's what my point is.
The Greenland police chief did a very comprehensive wage analysis survey. I sent that to the chair of the budget committee. I don't know if he shared it with you folks yet, but...
Well, I have it.
Okay, you have it?
Probably from the budget committee, I don't think that...
So that's why I sent it, I sent it to John. And I asked him, you know, if he feels, if it's appropriate, you know, reach out to the rest of the... So you can see where we stand, not only localized, but it does it by county, and it does it statewide. And in every single category, we are well below the state, the state average. Maybe in 2019, with that information, maybe we could sit down together with the board and say, this is where we are, how do we get up, just so that we're equal to, or close to?
Not to the bottom, but maybe in the middle, or, I don't know. I just think that sometimes when you have an opening and you're hiring somebody, there's a potential that you will hire at a higher rate than the last one hired, because they didn't, they're not coming with the same experience. But you're not gonna get that experience if you're not willing to pay for it. That's, that's the issue, right? I mean, you're just, huh?
You're preaching to the choir. I'm taking a stop, right? I agree with you, I mean...
Well, the choir's been doing this for years, and I'm just saying it's time to stop.
We did some market increases a few years ago, and that was a start, but it wasn't, it shouldn't have finished, so...
Lieutenant Yeraskovich was the last officer that we hired that came to us with experience. So since then, we've had one, two, three that have stayed, and the two that we hired, that one guy, three weeks in the academy, took off, and then one guy was here three weeks and took off, so...
If the budget committee wants to recommend an increase into the bottom line of the budget to go towards market increases or adjustments for police salaries, I'm all for it.
That's not really what I'm looking for, I'm looking for probably a suggested scale of looking at it and getting some more information to understand where we are, and he's got a perfect thing, and I will send it to the board as well. But my goal is to, let's reevaluate it again and increase it as we need to, to be able to get the quality police officers that we're looking for. That's, I'm not...
Don't disagree with me, but we're not gonna be able to do that at this point in the process.
Right.
It should be the budget committee saying, we've got this information. Clearly, market adjustments are called for, and they truly are. We should be, we should be, you should be, the select board should be, we should be increasing the bottom line of the budget X amount of dollars, and the select board should be taking that money and putting it towards, it's suggestive, and take it and put it towards market increases for police salaries. And that's what needs to happen. I mean, the reason we're in this merit increase scenario is because there was a very, there is a very vocal member of the budget committee that was very upset that there are police officers that were getting across-the-board increases because they didn't deserve it, it should be merit-based, because that's how it works in the industry that that person works in. Well, I would argue that police officers are public employees, and shouldn't be subjected to that, but we are trying that, we tried it last year, now this is the second year of this...
Well, it could be two hours, one, you get the cost of living increase, and then on top of that...
And then on top of it, of course! That makes sense, sir.
Because then if you have just a cost of living, then you can increase your starting salary by that cost. And then you have your merit, which is totally just merit. So you could get two types of raises based on each employee, based on what their performance is. One wouldn't give maybe all of them, but...
But they would get that cross, the cost of living adjustment, I mean, it's, or if not, your salary remains stagnant, and you can't attract the best employees.
Well, we have the survey, wanna, I don't know if it's appropriate this time to go through this budget process, but certainly...
No, for next year, just putting it out there, we need to work on that.
Let's sit together, and whether we form a committee, or we just pass it out, even maybe within the existing budget at this point, because, you know, again, you know, we budgeted for an officer for the entire year, but I don't anticipate having anybody obviously come in January. So there might be some money there to do something with prior to 2020.
I mean, I, I...
I just think...
I've been watching you do this, and you've been watching him do it, you were on the budget committee a lot longer than me. Well, this is not the first time we've had this conversation. With people sitting on the side of the table.
No, I understand that.
The actors change, perhaps, but it's still the same. I feel like you just bang your head against the wall every year, saying, my officers aren't paid enough. So, you're right, I'm not arguing with you, you're absolutely right.
I just think we should have some flexibility with maybe a sliding scale or something, to give him the option to be able to start, that's...
I agree, we just have to have the money available on the line to do it. I'm not, I don't, I'm not opposed to it. Are you opposed to it? Nikki, would you contribute to it?
No, so at this point, with the, what I call the surplus of money in the salaries line item, is there flexibility if you had an applicant that had five years of experience?
Yes.
Okay, so we have some...
Yeah, when I met with the budget committee, I asked them to keep, some money was taken out.
Right.
They ended up getting it put back in, so there is some flexibility there that if we do get someone who's certified, who comes with the experience, then they could get additional money towards their...
We have a single applicant that's already certified.
We've had one.
But it wasn't someone who felt comfortable with.
Correct, oh.
So thirty-nine-nine-nine-nine is the starting salary for someone with...
That's green, it has no experience.
No expense, okay. That's gonna go through an academy training, that's very valuable, costs us...
Well, it doesn't require the town anything, does it?
We just pay their, we just have to pay their salary.
Okay.
And you have to pay some to cover the shift.
But the cost of going to the academy is...
Pay someone to cover their shift, and what, and go get their fines.
They're fined, right?
Yes.
In the academy, yeah, so... More people speed, the more money goes in the bank.
I'll see what I can do about that.
Perfect, okay.
I think Katie would appreciate that, right?
So, we digress, yes. But, alright, there's no disagreement, I don't think, as long as I would say, well, we want...
I just wanted to make that clear.
We want, no, I...
I mean, you're competing in a labor market that's very tight.
Very tight, I know, yes.
It's gonna be hard to attract.
And we're confused, as we were competing with Manchester State, it's not like we're talking about maybe the surrounding communities, we're talking about every department in the state, no. In Maine and Massachusetts, really, I mean, just because they live in Maine, it doesn't mean they have your police officers here, right? They're certified in another state, right? You don't have to live, do you have to live in Maine to be an officer in Maine? No, so, no.
No, Scott is working in Maine.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, so we're not, we're competing with even more communities, so...
Does your, does the salary survey have benefits as well, as part of it? Because that, you know, I don't know, not everyone is...
I don't know.
Just curious.
I think it's more, yeah, I think it's more of a wage survey, I need close details and things like that, but I don't recall it having the benefits on there.
But how do we compare with time off to Dover? I'm just, I have no idea if you know.
We're below average, even in those areas. Vacation, insurance, things like that, yeah, so...
Is vacation based on use of service, or is it just what you get, and everyone gets the same thing?
Yes, it's based upon use of service here.
Okay, and how far do we go up for vacation?
Fine.
How many weeks is the max of vacation?
I think it's five, yeah, Scott was up to five.
Yeah, it's up to twenty years.
Yeah.
Oh, it's twenty years, you get five?
Well, but Scott, he had twenty years, he had twenty years, so... I think it's like sixteen or something like that, years, yeah, so...
But, yeah, it took him a long time to approve it, to get to that level, right? I mean, you know, it's...
Well, yeah, that's with any job, right?
Right.
But if he can't take the time off to take his vacation, if he doesn't know...
Great.
Yeah, and I really don't think the vacation parts, the issue, I think it's split it up initially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I have. I'm off my soapbox.
Well, what you're saying is important, so... So that, please read my, I wasn't gonna ask this question, but I guess I won't now. So was there anything else in the budget committee that came up that you wanna work, talk to?
No, actually, they, other than the question about the money that was taken originally, taken out of the salary...
The result of that, that was a mistake.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
Now, now pushback on your signs, or?
No, no.
Well, I think I'm getting a half-brown answer.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we have received official notification yet, but, so...
Alright, perfect, well, great, thank you.
Have a great night.
I may see you next Monday?
Well, if not, I'm happy to do as well, yeah.
I'll call you.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, to where we were. Police, town administration, so we covered, covered the warrants of budget. I've asked Caroline to keep that on here, and I think we may have it under here as well, under, under board member activities and updates, it might be more practical to keep it here. Updates on the budget committee meetings, and any, you know, if there are requests and things that come, if the budget committee votes to ask for a certain piece of information, you know, report that back to us, and we can talk about that sort of thing.
I'm, you say that, goes without saying, but, okay.
Well, I just wanted to standing, that's why it says budget here, that's why I asked her to put it under there. Was there anything, I wasn't there on Wednesday, so I saw you had an email, there was about, questions about Mark's...
Well, yeah, there's, there was a lot of conversation about the fire department, which I discussed with Mark, and was going to get in contact with them, but it wasn't anything, well, you're talking about all departments, or you're talking about...
Well, yeah, so just an update on what happened at the, at the budget committee meeting, if there was any update you wanted to do.
There was, there was conversations on Mark's budget for mostly the radios, it was a very long conversation. They didn't understand why we were buying so many when he only has four or five people showing up, which isn't the norm, it's, it happens, and so, and also, they wanted to know why on CIP there was a forestry truck on there. Did the best I could to describe to them when they bought a transporting vehicle, you know, their command vehicle. So I did the best I could to explain to them the difference between a forestry truck and a command vehicle. One is a fire truck, and one is a command vehicle, where they take people, not...
Off-road, right?
It's not off-road. So I met with Mark tonight to go over some things, and I asked if he would consider hosting the budget committee, and anybody else who would like to come, to the fire station one night, and so they can see the equipment, they can understand what he's talking about, and they can see whatever they want and ask any questions. And he has agreed to do that, I'm gonna set up a date, it'll be either Tuesday, Thursday night, and...
I'm confused, though.
Why?
Why were they even worried about a vehicle that's not up for this year?
Because it was on there.
Well, so is a new fire truck, but we're not buying it next year, right?
I know, but it's on there for next year, the thing.
Well, next year.
I'm, I'm just telling you what they, long conversation about it, and I, and I know, I agree, but I just told you, those are two things we talked about the most.
I didn't even address them, just I was confused.
So the radios, it was more about how many people show up. And when he said it was, you know, sometimes two or three, that's during the day. It's not at night, and it also depends on the call, too, about how many radios they need. They're structured by, that is a lifeline to that person, to the command outside. And it can be, especially in the evening, you could have fifteen people there, you know. Not all of them are gonna be in the building, but, you know, so...
Could be multiple calls, too.
Could be multiple calls, especially in the winter months when you have trucks all over, or in the spring when you have your major storms, you know? And they're all over the place, and they have to be able to talk. Some are stored in the fire trucks, and some are there by the radio room when they grab, the officers grab them and go into the trucks with them. And then they have to still have some that are, especially, you don't know how long your calls are... They have to be having some ready if the other ones have warned that their batteries are worn down, they have to be charged. They can grab another one and go. If it's, you know, they've been there sometimes, you know, forty-eight hours straight. It's just the nature of the business. But, so he is gonna, he's gonna be there and he's gonna have some of the guys there that answer questions and we will see what happens. But yeah, those are the two things that they had most questions on.
Okay.
So I don't remember who else, what else, what was the other one we had?
CIP. I had asked, I had asked what the beginning balance of the CIP was.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have that. Do you have that?
Yeah.
No, you know what, I'll, I'll, I forgot about it though. Oh, you didn't mail it to them? Beginning balance.
I'm confused because this is something.
I'll make sure. Yeah, it should be in the yellow book.
If you go by this in CIP, three thirty-four, three thirty-four.
Three thirty-four, two thirty-four.
So.
Is that the beginning or does that contain the, the stuff that was being proposed? What's in the yellow book? Cause that's the beginning balance for the share rate?
Better than that. There it is.
Yeah, that's right, that's on that tonight's.
It's in front of me.
Two five five oh five three.
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents current.
That's the balance today without any additions for next, next month. I will send that out.
So we can also send out the, the full spreadsheet that shows, you know, next.
Once it's done.
The years out, yeah.
It's not done.
I have been working on it.
I'm, I'm sure you have, but I explained to him that this is what's being proposed this year. Once that document's completed, then it will be sent out. But I was gonna send that incomplete one day.
Well, cause we also, cause we were supposed to go the last week and then all of a sudden, the week before we're told we're being moved up.
Yeah, yeah.
Following week.
But I mean, it's, it's not something that they need. They only need to know what is the current year's proposals. But they will have it as soon as it's a completed document and it's, it's all done.
Soon as Miles finishes this. It's working, okay. Is there anything else that we can know about what happened there? Or we should be working on? Is there any, any information that the committee requested, not individual members, but any committee request?
No.
But if we secretary of hosting, we've had one person submit a resume of sorts. I don't know who the person is, they don't live there, right?
They lived in Rochester.
Rochester, 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 some sort of, I mean, my suggestion would be to send off the resume to John and if he looks at it and thinks it's someone that the committee can work with, I mean, we can.
The resume is pretty limited though.
It was very limited, but we haven't heard anything from anybody. The volunteers of, we're told to find every budget season, haven't been knocking on the door, down the doors.
I know, do you want me to send it to him?
What's that?
Do you want me to send it to him, forward it to him?
Yep, that'd be great. All right. Strategy workshop.
I know, I think it's strategy workshop.
There's a typo there. Strategy workshop, okay. So there is a, is it through Suffolk University, is that just doing it?
Uh, yes, I, is this me?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, yep, so this, there is a, oh my goodness. There was something that we got in our mail and it's a program on. Strategy performance management certificate and it's through Suffolk.
Suffolk University.
Yeah. And I would like to participate and take the course, it's an online course. And the cost.
Ten-week course or something.
Yep. It's eleven hundred dollars for a government and nonprofit employee.
But for ten weeks, I mean, it's not like this.
No, no, it's not just a one day, no, it is a online, it's a certificate, it's not a, it's not a degree. Program, but it's a certificate program for improving the efficiencies and effectiveness of public and non-public organizations. And it looked like something that we might get back into, you know, possibly if we had the funds, I would like to take it.
I didn't bring it outside.
Yeah.
Got the email, but I wasn't, didn't have the time to take it myself, so. Online strategy management program is known for its two, students enroll in a ten-week online training course covering four core topics. I'm betting with the core is performance management and government strategic planning for performance management, measuring and reporting performance and evidence-based management. If you're willing to. Put this out. Probably find where, there's something else I read about it.
You know, you took the whole thing, I don't know.
It's for measuring and improving the performance of, of government service and government and nonprofit service delivery organization. So clearly there are efficiencies that can be found. But unless you know how to find them, you may not be looking. I don't know if you want to take the course or not, we have money off clearly that we found. Also on the budget, just in Georgia, the budget alone, so offset it, so.
Miles? I, I think if you're, if you're willing to do it, I think it would be really useful information for us to build on.
I mean, my goal is the, the, I'm pointing at the imaginary number on the page. The, the amount that was found just in Georgia's lines of unused money, that's just one department. That will be in, in police, fire, also other money. In my, my, this one board member's opinion is that the bulk of that, that overall majority of that should go back to fund balance for offsetting taxes next year. So I don't think eleven hundred dollars is gonna be an issue, so I'm all for it.
So that's the complete cost.
Yeah, it's eleven hundred dollars per student government, for government and nonprofit employees. It's a twelve fifty for other students. And it's a ten-week course.
Registration and course fees.
Yep.
Okay.
Can we do a motion?
Someone needs to make sure, I'll, I'll move to allow Denver roles to take the class at Suffolk University for eleven hundred dollars.
I'll, for, for a strategic performance management certificate. So it's clear as what we're sending our school for.
You want this?
Yeah, I do.
All right. So the move to second, although the favors say aye. Aye, oppose, any abstentions?
Should I?
Maybe.
I already voted, but yeah, I'll.
Okay, one abstention, okay. Motion passed, all right, so.
Thank you.
This is on, that takes care of three items, there's only one. On three lines, that makes me happier. Acceptance of Wentworth Road and Pleasant Street, okay. We have been notified by the developer, the Chinbergs, that they are ready to turn Wentworth and a portion of Pleasant Street over to the town that they have improved. It has been, it has not been past practice, let me back up. It's my recommendation that unlike in the past, when the select board member or the road agent just go over and take a look at the road and say, yeah, looks good to me. That we send our town engineer over. Born, the cost is not borne by the town, it's borne by the, the applicant, thank you. So I would suggest we, we have our town engineer, Mr. Stevens, go over and take a look at it, take a look at them rather, and report back to us as to whether or not it's in acceptable condition to be turned back over to the town. Or to be, to put on the warrant to be voted on at town meeting.
Okay, and who is this, Mr. Stevens?
Is Jay Stevens with civil consultant.
Oh, okay, so they're our record.
Civil work, civil consultant.
Civil consultant.
In South Borough.
South Borough, yes.
So they're our record.
They are.
Record that these are, okay.
This is who we use, the planning board uses and we have been sending over to review other. Projects, reviews, and doing peer review.
Well, they certainly have more experience than the rest of us. I mean, the road is hard, I would say yes, it would blind anyone, I mean, I would know nothing. So I, I would agree that we should send someone who knows what they're doing.
Yep. All right, so I need a motion to have the town ask our, our consulting engineer, Mr. Stevens, go over and take a look at Wentworth Road and Pleasant Street to see if it's ready for acceptance by the town meeting.
I'll make that motion that he just said. Did you get that? Okay.
So. Moved to second, did all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. So Mr. Stevens over. We've already talked about the police station, town hall warrant article, you're gonna have your committee make a recommendation to us ASAP, right?
Yeah.
Perfect. I mean, I, I am concerned that we're running out of time and that we don't have a plan for this building. And we don't have, okay, so you and Bob and the rest of the committee have two scenarios from Chin, uh, yeah, not Chinburg, Bruin, I think, Bruin, Bruin, right, yeah. One with and one without town hall facility, which I think is wonderful, cause that's a good option. There are, there will be pushback, of course, there will be folks angry that we don't have an option that incorporates the NASA that we already have, which is the town hall. So I don't think you have time to, to create a plan and do all the research for that. But I mean, that is something we need to consider and we may very well hear that at a public hearing as we move forward. So I think you should be aware of that. There was at one time a plan, it was overblown, I think. The company that we hired was probably not the greatest company, but that incorporated this building and taking, I think that red building behind us, buying it and, and building a police station off the back, so they're not subterranean anymore. We could dust that off and that could be an option. I mean, if people want option, I mean, I don't know if it's fully vetted, so that's, but I mean, so there are, there is some of that stuff has been done in the past, so.
And I think, it was one of the thoughts that I had, it's about buying that building next door and.
I'm not endorsing it, I'm just saying that was one of the.
No, I was just saying that is another option.
Right, so if people get hung up on, and I don't remember what the dollar amount was, I, I seem to recall that it was very high. But I don't know if that's because of the type of firm that we had contracted with originally, I don't, I don't remember, so. But again, it's something, we have that also with.
So I, I'm sort of out of the loop on the background. What is the, what is the issue we're trying to solve with the new building? And maybe that's a conversation that's longer than.
Well, the original part of it was that the police were in water situation more, more times than not, every time it rained. However, I do think that with all these heavy rains we've had recently, I don't think they've had any water.
Cause we mitigated that with drainage.
Did something out on the front parking lot, right? And so.
The roof.
Oh, and the roof.
The roof was put on.
We, we, there was, there were several issues. There was the back roof here in the back had holes in it and Bob had been doing this going forth for ten years, I think. But there were holes in the back roof that never got resolved. We resolved that. There was the cupola, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't closed off at the top. So when it rained, and it was a smaller opening, so it was not like a lot of rain, but enough got in, so it poured straight down. So that's why they were getting rain in the elevator shaft that never was.
Okay.
And then there was the drainage issues from around the building and we've helped mitigate some of that. So there have been things that have been done.
Yeah.
Now, that doesn't solve the problem that there are spatial needs.
Right.
Is the basement really the best place for police department? Probably not. There was also mold issue that we have mitigated as well, so.
No, there's definitely been improvements, for sure. But I mean, I didn't hear a couple of nights where the water was pouring in those windows over by the, the front door. You know, cause it's all, and to really do this building correctly and say, okay, let's stay in the town hall, I think that you're gonna have, you're gonna spend at least what it's costing for the police station and town administration to do it correctly, to do it correctly, I do. It's a lot of work here, I mean, this stuff needs to just be, there's just a lot of work here. I mean, to do it correctly, it was, it was short-changed during the whole process of getting it done.
And before that, there was a lot of deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
And so the board at the time, I think did the best they could with what they were.
Yeah, yeah, but.
I think they tried.
It was, you know, it was just definitely things that.
Corners were cut.
Definitely.
But because of funding, I mean, so the, the, we could go on about this all night, but. The, the, the path that, that ruined, that the firm that seems to have the winning strategy right now employs and a lot of other firms employ now is this design build. You don't design it, get it passed, and then send it off to, to a construction firm. They're, they're under one umbrella now. You get, this is the price it costs to do all of the soup to nuts instead of the old way where you didn't really know and you were, you said, oh, you've had eight hundred and fifty thousand and oh, really, it's gonna cost a million and five. You gotta figure out where you're gonna cut and you don't put insulation in the walls and things like that, so. Had we employed, and that, this is not a new theory, design builds are a new theory, it's been around for quite a few decades, actually. It just wasn't employed then, so I mean, not gonna second guess what was done then, but it probably wasn't the best way and it was the way it was done and it is, so that's how we did it.
And at the public hearing that we had to present the two projects and stuff, what we heard from, as a committee was that they wanted to have it on a bigger piece of land to be able to have eventually, maybe not right away, but all three companies, fire, police and administration. You won't be able to do it there. That won't be able to fit there. And the negotiations didn't result in that for the other piece of land that we were looking at. So, you know, I mean, it's definitely gonna have to be a sell because it isn't a hundred percent what the people were looking for and, and then you really need to know what you're gonna do up here.
A lot of the folks that said that you needed to find at least a five acre, I mean, I went to, I attended this meeting as well, sat in the back and listened. I don't, I don't know that any of them stepped forward to help you find any five acre, magical five acre unicorns at that.
No, they didn't.
So, sorry, it turned out to be flipped. No one stepped forward to help you find these parcels of land that they claim are out there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's that too.
Yeah, so, you know, I think Lee Duchamp's opinion is that it's really just very tight down there and there's not a lot of room for the amount of stuff that he has, you know.
Downstairs.
Downstairs, yeah. So that's, and, and with their previous issues, just he's looking to have bigger, bigger accommodations.
Right now, and so people will say, well, currently we're grandfather, right? Cause we're in a space that was designed and built as a police station prior to certain requirements being in place. Clearly the building's a lot older than the initial requirement. But, so if we were to build something new, there are requirements for separate, say locker rooms for men and women. Supersub, I mean, it should be, you know, obviously different restroom, things like that, that holding cells too, there were, there are juvenile cells versus adult cell, I mean, things that didn't exist when, when the space downstairs was repurposed, right? So that's another reason why it would cost a lot more to build. There are, there are things that some folks may see as extravagant, but they're required, they're, I don't think they're extravagant. I mean, so, I mean, I know people have already started talking about, you know, Bob Ducharme is, you know, Crystal Palace or whatever, but I don't think that's fair either because, I mean, Bob is not, you know, creating, you know, the designs that you require to have under certification laws, so. Anyways, but anyways, so we can sit here and debate amongst ourselves, I guess, until we have an actual.
So we will.
First, we should say thank you for the work that you put in. We should do that at least, we should say thank you to Bob Ducharme, we will actually, but I mean, I know it's not easy, so.
So we will, we'll get something written up and send a proposal forward.
Awesome. So the next thing we have on the agenda is the town administrative draftbook. You will see, as Caroline can see, a four-page document that I do not wanna act on tonight, but I want you to look at and have an opportunity to read and will also email to you. I would like to work on it next Monday night, okay? I would like to work on it next Monday night, okay? Because I would like to have something ready for the first of the new year to work on, to be, talking about, you know, an actual job description for folks to understand. These are the types of things that the person will be required to work on, there are four, four, almost four, three and three-quarter pages of functions, essential functions. So, we're all on record, we need to be prepared to talk about it for next, for next month, okay? We all agree for that?
Yeah.
Myself included? To be ready to talk about it, I don't know what it says, but, anyway.
I guess we can, we can talk about it when we get to, what member activities.
Okay. Oak Street MOU, is it in one of these folders for us to sign? I hope. Should be in that one, I think. Probably.
Number five. Reviewed.
Do you have it?
No, I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Right here.
What is that?
Embrace agreement.
Thank you.
City Dover and Town of Rawlins. So, the only new language is number five, this agreement shall continue until either party gets notice, and writing to the other party terminating the contract with a date of at least thirty days from receipt of notice. And it talks mostly, I mean, it does talk all about maintenance, mostly winter, but there are some summer as well, so, we've had it for several months, George has made his recommendations, Bob and Mark were comfortable with the status quo, all ready to sign. So, we have our, all right.
I think that's been on the agenda the entire time.
Yes, and get this taken care of tonight, that'd be wonderful, we'll send it off to our counterparts in Dover, and they can either endorse or reject, or amend, or whatever, I'm assuming there's some endorsement. Terrific, cross that one off finally. Next, we have the lab and inventory penalty. We have already taken care of this, but we never did the new form, it was in that transition week, and we missed it, so, we had already voted on, on the lab and's penalty abatement, and we already talked about it, so, we'd already voted on it, so, we'll sign it. So, this is not an additional one, this is one we've already, we've already taken care of, so we're officially resolved at night. And we apologize to them, it was in that, like I said, in that transition week, so we didn't, we had the new form, but we didn't, we didn't have this taken care of, so. All right, policy review, I'd like to table this for next week as well, if that's okay with everyone, the tobacco-free policy?
Yes.
Fine.
No, I'm just, I'm just not ready to talk about it tonight, and I don't know what I thought about. How about signals, just not speak, that's okay, so. The neurovirus made its way through the role of residents, so, it was lovely week. All right, Town Administration Board Member Activity, Miles, you seem like you're itching to talk about something that happened, so.
Not, not really, a town resident passed away, I don't know if you know, Clayton Randall died.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't.
Last week, and his memorial service is next Monday night, which I don't know what time it is, but I would like to attend on some-
Sure, of course.
So, either before or at night. So, that, that's all.
If we all can't make it, please extend our-
Yes.
Our sympathies to the family.
So, also last week, last Tuesday, we had our planning board meeting, the amendment to the firm Oldenburg Lane got approved.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To five-
Houses?
Five houses. And then we also discussed the zoning changes, which we already looked at, and it was-
So, it was accessory dwelling units, and we're finally gonna be-
Yep, we'll be compliant with the-
You think this time we finally will be compliant?
Yes.
We hope?
Yep.
That's good to know.
Caroline has the correct language.
Good.
The select board, or designated, will replace Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
And then the, the C one district's special provision.
Yeah, so that they actually match up to what we thought we were doing, like, three years ago now, two years ago, something like that?
At least two, yeah.
Two years ago now?
Yeah, yeah, two.
All right, good one.
So, and Denise, if you, if you can let me know when the, the fire department walkthrough is, I would love to attend that, I mean, get over there.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do it on Tuesday or Thursday, next week if that works.
Next week.
Yep, but I will let you, I'll copy you and spoil us the budget.
Tuesday doesn't work for me, but if it, if it doesn't work, it's fine, but-
All right, I will-
Company, I'll go in.
Okay, okay. Me? Okay, I had budget committee last week, and I have budget committee this week, we're doing the school budget this week, and I think that's all I have this week.
So, you're gonna give us a report anyways, but if they have any raise, if they have any, which I'm sure you probably will, any capital, I have the-
I have a huge budget proposed.
Yet to see it, so.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind getting us a copy, so we could, I thought they had said they would forward all those things to us, so we go working concert when we worked on our CIP, but not confident that that happened this year, so.
Well, it'll get confirmed on Wednesday night, but the last I heard-
It's not your fault.
No, no, I, no, but the last I heard, the last meeting I went to, that there is a big project proposed.
Okay. Yay, all right, um, okay. It shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been under, because I wanted to have it as an update, you wanna know what happened?
Yep.
That's why I asked you to put it under for town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I, it should have said budget committee update, but it, it didn't get updated, so.
Okay, that's fine, I'll make sure you guys just stay with, I also make sure you guys can get the copies of minutes, too, if you wanna-
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Be helpful.
Yeah.
All right. We have a red folder.
I thought we did this one last week, but I don't know, it might be, it's a, it's a-
It's not stamped.
It's not stamped, sewage disposal system one sixty, General Sullivan Way.
Look in the back, look, we stamped the print, right? Is it?
I thought it was this one.
I thought it was that one, too.
Tom said he reviewed it today, or I don't know what the date is.
So, we need the town stamped to go in.
Oh.
So, I'm gonna sign it.
All right, then I'll stamp.
So, we have it officially?
Okay.
And then, wouldn't you go in, post down in the meeting, you can just stamp that real quick, don't forget the stamp and data, even though that's-
On the stamp, right?
What I've just done up here, which I know is pricey, but-
All right, I'll take it with me and stamp it.
And we can put it back in the red folder, okay?
I thought we already did that one.
That it?
That's it for the red folder.
No, I'll just take it then, we'll, so we don't lose it.
I guess not. Okay.
So, we don't have to, so I don't honestly have to, but, okay. So, what do we have for correspondence?
All right, so we have a book here for the various data for policy positions, and we have state aid to confidentiality.
Okay, even better.
Yeah.
Yay.
And we have, and this is just a confirmation confirming that we are using comp terms for temporary position.
Yes.
And how much is just the FYI.
Yeah.
On that. And then, an FYI, C coast shipyard association. They usually tell you how many employees you have, and-
Yeah, I want this out, I think the payroll is under the town.
Yeah.
It's sizable, actually, in the Rawlins.
It is, they, last I knew, they had ninety employees, I don't know if that's still current. They're looking, sort of, they're asking for their nineteen budget allocation for the Town Rawls with the amount of one hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Did we, we didn't, did we?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, very good, so we're all set.
Sorry, you're early.
Shipyard employees, seventy-one employees with an annual payroll of five million, eight hundred and fourteen one cent a week.
Yep.
Wow.
Lot of money in this little town.
Yeah, yeah.
In form of payroll.
So, this is just an FYI as well, we have to keep it that.
Shipyard, moving along.
Someone's in New Hampshire, notice of meeting, finding, notice of the meeting, some land use board public here, relative to property that abus yours, as a matter, you were entitled to attend the meeting to provide any comments or questions that may have regarding the application. The meeting is held at City Hall in council chambers, if you're unable to attend the meeting, please feel free to submit a letter with your comments to the planning department, and I'll tell you where you are. Oh, Linda Hodgson and David Blaisdell are seeking a lot line adjustment, located on Stack Pole, is that another, okay, I got it there, I'll hold them. Someone is relocating a build, a building, garage, associated infrastructure on Tri-City Road in the business district, so this is, this is ours, John Flatley.
Oh, yeah.
Who, where is this?
Oh, John Flatley owns the Plaza.
Oh, okay, oh, so it's way by that in the back.
Yeah, so, Flatley, John Flatley is a huge developer from Massachusetts that owns all those, a lot of malls.
With market access.
Strip malls and things in New Hampshire.
Oh, okay, so, anyway, it's a notice of a public hearing if you would like to-
And what is it, the lot line adjustment, or is he moving a building, or is it?
He's relocating a building, number three, the garage and associated infrastructure on that property.
Okay. It's all conservation, that's it.
Yeah. Do you wanna say it?
Sure.
All right. And-
We could forward it on to the Chair of the Planning Board, why don't we have that?
Forward to Chair.
Chair of the Planning Board, we never-
Who, isn't that her?
That's Carol.
Forward to Chair. Of Planning Board. She'll probably have chucked it in her mouth.
I thought so.
Request for disbursement, press address Caroline Kendall, the amount requested is forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to the Highway Department service truck from the CIP reserve fund to general fund.
Okay, so, so, I screwed that up last week, I should have had it lower on headlines. So, request for disbursement is to move forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the Highway Department, or the Highway Service, Highway Department service truck from the CIP reserve fund to the general fund, it was as authorized by the town meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Town meeting's already authorized, but we're not authorizing to sign it.
I have another one, the amount request disbursement, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and six for the police cruiser from the CIP fund to the general fund.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed?
How much was it?
Forty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
And the last one is disbursement of ten thousand, one fifty-four eighty-two, okay?
No, I don't have a hundred.
Ten thousand, one fifty-four eighty-two.
Okay.
Okay, for the roadside mowing attachment from CIP to the general fund.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
Any input?
Silly little hole with Washington Street, when they look at Pleasant and Wentworth Street. Will they, looking at the criteria that was laid out when it went through the planning board?
Yes.
There's often cars parked on Pleasant Street on the weekends, which creates a fire hazard for a fire truck getting through, but that, because they park right down to the T where the fire truck would-
They'll be looking at the physical, the physical requirements, not-
Not like fire safety.
People park where they park.
Is there no parking sign anywhere?
I don't know, I know there is on Wentworth Street, I don't know if there is on Pleasant Street or not.
I don't know, I have to look at, I don't know, I wasn't on the planning board, I don't know what it says, but if not, we can revisit that after the road is officially adopted. Well, part of the road already is, is the N Ts that-
Yeah, but-
They look at all the, the physical requirements.
Yeah.
And make sure the road is actually built to spanks.
That was why-
If there were supposed to be drains in certain places, that they're actually, they are messable.
My other question is, for those people who are interested in putting petition warrant articles on to the warrant.
Yep.
Is there a timeline available somewhere?
Yes.
And where would we find that timeline?
It's in the calendar.
It's on the town calendar, if you go on the town website, you go to the town calendar, it's on there, it is in January sometime, February twenty-fifth, maybe, it's today?
Okay, just that it is.
I wonder, I don't think my-
It's in, it's in the news, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to, I don't believe that my, yeah, my personal calendar doesn't drive up to the town calendar, I'll figure that out, so it will, but, I think it's the twenty-fifth, but if you go on the town website, or you can look at your little cheat that came with your tactical, it's also there.
Okay.
Any other, anything else? All right, I'm gonna go home, have a nice night, it is eight twenty-seven. Leave this on the train.
Where are you going?
Beautiful world, an island for two days. I'm gonna drive around, relax, I'm gonna take my-
Did you go to, you, I can take my bus to South Station, I think.
Yeah, it does. Well, it does, because our office is right next to the airport, so you can take the train from South Station to wherever the airport is proper, which is a little warmer. Right there, which is awesome. Yeah, so my sister and I have to go down for two days, my sister and I drive to this point, and we're like, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to cover, and look at the half, it was cheaper to, let's take the bus from Dover, to Dover, yeah, and take the train to South Station, but, where'd I?
Cool.
Yeah, so I have to get the work done, too, I'm sitting there, but she has wife?
I have a question.
Which is awesome. All right, I'm gonna go get this signed.
Me?
Take this.
It was recommended that-